...in three years from the date of the final confirmation. So those are just a couple of the questions I have, and I'm wondering if we can't maybe tweak this to come into compliance with state statute and to be more clear on the definitions and the terms.
Mr. Weaver.
To address your issues, the council is the body by the ordinance that you have in front of you that approves the members of the committee. Although it allows the mayor to nominate, the mayor's not making the choice ultimately. The table is. And therefore, it follows state statute.
This doesn't say anything about the mayor nominating it.
It doesn't.
We already have commissions stacked to the ceiling from the mayor not bringing forward certain applications from certain people for certain reasons. So I have a real problem with that. This says it is to be designated for that purpose by the municipal council. It doesn't have anything to do with the mayor. No offense toward the mayor. It doesn't say anything about the mayor.
It's not a legal objection that you're raising. It's an objection to the way the ordinance functions. The ordinance will function legally as drafted or legally if you remove that portion. So you have asked me to review it for legality. It's legal as drawn, but it can also be redrafted to remove the nomination process by the mayor and create a different nomination system. Because the requirement of state law is that the council approve the members, not that it ultimately approves them, not that it begins the process. Now, as to your second point about the ordinance addresses, that if persons are no longer on the committee, and by virtue if they were to no longer be aldermen, they would lose their status, they would be replaced. But the way the ordinance is drafted by Mr. Pannell, they would remain for three years if they remained aldermen.
It doesn't say that here.
It doesn't.
I don't see it saying that. And it's in conflict with state statute. State statute says to be designated for that purpose by the municipal council. It doesn't say nominated by the mayor and approved by the council. It says to be designated for that purpose by the municipal council. Doesn't have anything to do with the mayor in this. Thank you.
Mr. Pannell.
I make a motion if this ordinance is reviewed by the city attorney and be brought to the table at the next meeting.
Second.
Second.
Is it with or without amendment?
As it's been approved.
As it's been approved.
We have three readings. That's, you know, we'll make changes, whatever.
Okay. Motion to bring to the next meeting. And there was a second.
I don't understand the motion.
Mr. Pannell, you want to clarify?
If the ordinance has approved by, or has been reviewed for legality by the city attorney, be put on the next agenda for consideration by the council.
And Mr. Barry DeVito, second.
James.
James, okay. Mr. Raphael.
Hasn't that already been done? Surely our attorney would not bring us a legal document, would he? I mean, hasn't that already been done? He just gave you the penny.
Mr. Barry.
Well, I guess, from my understanding, there's about two different ways this thing can go. We can do the 206, or there seems to be also a sanitary board, too. And the sanitary board has a sanitary board comprised of the mayor, the municipality, and two persons appointed by the council. And there's also, as I understand it, can be a combination water sewer committee. So we have about three different options we have to go here.
Commission, yeah. On the last combined.
Well, it's committee and the commissions. So, you know, actually sewer committee. This is a sewer committee, and then there's a sanitation board, and then there's a water sewer committee. So, you know, it sounds like, you know, again, you guys were just talking about not wanting to make any more commissions on the auditorium, and here you are wanting another committee. So I guess I get all confused on this. But that's got nothing to do with what's on the board. My question is, is this the right way to go? Or should we have the sewer committee, or sanitation board, rather?
Mr. Pannell.
Has that been explored?
Trying to bring the city in line with state code.
There's three options, Mr. Mayor, that we can go to.
I've got the same idea. Mr. Raphael?
Can we postpone this and combine it with the goals workshop? Right now, we have a number of issues on there, and maybe we could discuss it at that point. Like much says, we have, there are other options. We just have, I think we didn't even decide why we want it. Why we need it, why we want it. Not just to have another. But there, we could discuss that, if we set a date for that.
Doc?
I'd agree with that. We're just, given what we're going to do right now, let's do it in the workshop, the goals.
Okay. We still have a motion on the board. Bring it until the next one is read. It's approved by the city attorney in a second. Unless there's a withdrawal or an amendment, we'll have to vote on what's on the table. If no changes, then, yes, sir?
Since our goals workshop keeps getting postponed, 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 I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Mr. Raphael, do you want to make that a motion now?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we combine it with our goals workshop.
Second.
Made in second, you combine it with the goals workshop. You for a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounding like six of you. Okay. Next on the agenda is Ray Dawson's list for loading and unloading passengers. Dr. Kirk Patrick, Ms. Balance. Motion to discuss?
Move discuss.
Second.
Discussion's open.
What do we have to consider?
This was put on the agenda, so.
That's what we asked him to bring at the last meeting. That's what was asked, so I sent him an email, so he could come to this meeting and give you a list.
Mr. Dawson, do you have your list of loading and unloading passengers?
I'm not real clear what you all want, but I'll try to indulge you as much as possible. I think you all probably got a copy of my map. And I think if you go back and look at the minutes and the tape, Mr. DeVito asked me where I was going to pick up and drop off on city streets. And my response to that was, I'm going to be picking up and dropping off on state highway. And Mr. DeVito's comment was, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a new point, because I'm not dropping off and picking up on city streets. I've just got the route over city streets. Now, from that, I spent a little time with the chief today, and I said, "Chief, I got to go before the council tonight, and all my routes here that I've got," and I have went and got a few places that I could drop off and pick up, but he told me that wasn't necessary. He said, "When I signed off on the route, you can pick up and drop off any place on your route." I am in negotiations with a few contracts with a few people within the city. And as you know, it's hard to put a business plan together without having a franchise. Since then, I have went to several businesses in town, and I've got a couple things working with the location and leasing the property. Has nothing to do with the city. It is on my route. It's a business, part of it's on state highway, where I drop off and pick up. And I think if you refer back to the chief's letter that he has given you all, that basically said he has no control, or neither does the city council, have any control over picking up and dropping off. Where I'm entitled to pick up and drop off is the loading zones. If I get a customer that calls me and I can say, "Pick up, please, you know, pick me up on the street," I can tell them what they're close to, the loading zone. I went to the transportation board and got a letter that says I can pick up at all trolley stops. If somebody is sitting at a trolley stop and I'm coming down the street and they flag me down, I can pull over and I can pick them up at the trolley stop, take them to their next destination on the state highway, and drop them off. So I don't understand the issue on my comments. I think the doc brought up an issue after I watched the tape, that I didn't have a, I didn't talk to the people at the lumberyard. I'm sorry, that was a miscommunication between one owner and the other owner. I've got a letter here in my file that says that we're working together. He's willing to lease me a piece of property on his property to disembark, pick up, drop off, whatever I need to do. And his property, front state highway, and it goes all the way back. And I'll be on private property to getting back to where I'm unloading or loading from my carriage. I spent a little time here in the city yesterday and a few days before, in the rain over here one day. Grand Central Hotel. I spoke with the owner there, and he had no problem with me taking some of his customers up and taking them wherever they wanted to go. The hotel, the Best Western that's up here on 62, which is just a short hop from Main Street, I've got a written permission from him that I can pick up his customers if they so choose to come to downtown, and I can drop them off. And obviously, if they want me to, I can take them back after dinner. And I don't, I really don't know why I'm here tonight, but I was asked to come. If you all want to, it's in the ordinance, it says that I can add things to my route as I go along. And if you all would like to look at my proposal here, I ran it by the chief, and the chief says that he don't need to sign drop off and pick up routes, because he's already approved my route with the approval of the route. And I really don't expect to be dropping off and picking people up on my route. Simply, I'll pick them up here and take them wherever they want to go, that's on my route.
Mr. DeVito.
Could I direct your question to the city attorney?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that we cannot conclude Mr. Dotson from passage on state highways. He has a franchise agreement with the city, and the franchise agreement states that his routes cannot overlap other routes. So even though we do not have the ability to regulate him on state highways, it's my understanding that we do have the ability to regulate the commerce that he conducts when he accepts money for his services, as per the franchise agreement. So it would be my understanding that he's not allowed to run routes that overlap with already established routes.
I'm not sure that I'm fully understanding that your, if location.
He can come and go up and down the state highway.
Yes.
He is a franchise holder, and as per that agreement, he is bound by the regulations of commerce in the city limits. And part of the franchise agreement is that the routes don't overlap. So what I'm saying is, he can't pick up people on other carriage routes. He can't engage in commerce on somebody else's route. He can drive up and down that route, but when he picks up a passenger for fare, he's violating the conditions of the franchise agreement.
May I read you the state law? The people that owns the state highway?
Let him.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I see the point that you're making, and I believe that your interpretation, or the way I see your interpretation, would be correct. He can travel over the route, but he cannot pick up individuals on that particular section of the route. I think that likely is in keeping with what the state highway department has communicated in all their correspondence with the city. And subject to a reinterpretation by them, I think your point is correct. He can travel with a passenger over that area, but he cannot pick up a passenger from that area.
May I address that, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Oh, Ms. Balance, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see him.
When we look at the ordinance regarding animal-drawn vehicles, which is chapter 4.28, and we look at permit and fee, and it lays out what must be in the application, we see in J, the proposed route, which must, this is something that must be included in the application, the proposed routes of the proposed enterprise, including the points of departure, termination, boarding, and disembarking. Then when we look over here at 42808, boarding and disembarking, "A franchise shall allow passengers to board and disembark only at the pre-established route termini and at other pre-established points on the route as set forth in the application." So that says to me, a franchisee can only, shall only, allow passengers to board and disembark only at the pre-established route termini and other pre-established points on the route. So that means, he can't just go out and pick up people here, and pick up people there, and take them where they want to go and drop them off. This says no. This is our city code. It says no.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
First off, you gave a franchise, and if you'll notice, my application does not have the state highway in my franchise. It don't. There's a reason for that. The reason is, you don't have the authority to give or deny business on that state highway. You don't have that authority. The chief will tell you that. He gave you a letter to that effect. The state says, here is the final word from the Arkansas Highway Department. It is the department's position that the city cannot regulate who may or may not operate a vehicle, including a horse-drawn carriage. Means you can't regulate on who can operate on this street out here. The state highway within the city corp, let me read that again, including horse-drawn carriages on a state highway, even within the city's corporation city limits. Now, that's their property. That'd be like you telling the grocery store or the hotels that I can't operate on their property. I can't pick up and give a ride on their property. You're discussing an issue on a state road that you do not own. Now, I've got a franchise on your routes. I am choosing to not pick up anybody on the city routes, and you won't see me be picking people up on the city routes. I'm strictly going to pick them up on 62 Highway, a business there on 62, at the lumberyard on 62, and if they want to come down here on this highway, that's what I'll do. Now, you can't give something that you have no right to give. The franchise that you give Mr. Thorpe, I guarantee you, he takes his carriage up to the Crescent, and he goes over the route that he owns both routes. But that's not what the ordinance says. It says one carriage company, franchise, and he's got two, can infringe on the other franchise. So if that's the case, if you want to play by that rules, Mr. Thorpe couldn't even drive his carriage from down here to the Crescent. Now, I'm not going to holler foul because he's doing that. That's part of business. Now, Mr. Thorpe, he's pushed the issue, and he's pushed the issue, but I am in my legal rights, and I think the city attorney will tell you that I can operate my business. I've got a city license to do that, folks. You gave it to me. I've got a franchise, and I've got a license. I've got a franchise to run on your city streets. I've got a business license to run inside your city limits. Now, within a few weeks or so, or a month, you will have another attorney's general's opinion that says that you can't franchise anything on city streets. Commerce, you can't restrict commerce. If I get a wedding booked at the Crescent Hotel, you're going to be hard-pressed by the commerce law that says I can't go and take care of my customers. You're infringing on commerce. And I don't think you all want to wade into that. I think the city attorney will tell you that. That you don't want to wade into, what is the issue? You gave him two franchises that ran, one franchise ran over the other route. There was nothing said. But it's a new business. Competition is good. It's going to make Mr. Thorpe better. It's going to make me better. I'm here to serve the citizens and the people that comes to Eureka Springs. One other thing, he had mentioned, I don't own a business here in town. Your franchise don't say that I got to own a business here in town. So we're trying to bring in outside things that the ordinance don't say. And if I'm not going to have pick up and drop off on your city streets, it's not an issue. I could pick them outside the city limits and bring them into the city. It's not an issue. You're trying to make it an issue, but it won't fly.
Ms. Balance.
The city council does indeed have the power to grant franchises. The city council also does indeed have the power to rescind franchises. When we read in 428, 42808, boarding and disembarking, "A franchisee shall allow passengers to board and disembark only at the pre-established route termini and at other pre-established points on the route as set forth in the application and approved by council." It goes further to say, "No animal-drawn vehicle for hire, driver shall solicit passengers for hire except at the depot." So if you're going to go ahead and do what you want to do, then you will be in violation of your franchise, at which point we certainly may rescind your franchise. Thank you very much.
You're correct, if I'm on your city street. But I'm not on your property. I am on the state of Arkansas's property that you have no control of. How hard is that to understand? I mean.
How hard is it to understand we could rescind your franchise if you do?
You can't rescind it without.
It says here, "A franchisee shall allow passengers to board and disembark only at the pre-established route termini." That's it.
Okay. That's enough.
Thank you.
Mr. DeVito.
Using Mr. Dotson's argument, I could run a taxi cab up and down Main Street all day long, picking up fares and never remitting taxes to the city. The state allows you free access to the highway. The state does not allow you free commerce on the highway. That is the purview of the city. You're in the city limits. We have the ability to regulate commerce on all streets within the city limits. We can't keep you from running up and down the streets if it's a state highway. You can do that all day long. But if you're accepting money and doing business on somebody else's route, then we have a problem.
You can't give a route that you don't have the authority to give a route to. It says, their property, you don't have the authority to do that, DeVito. You don't have that authority. Now, you might think you do, but you don't. I have done nothing, I have done nothing to, for anybody to talk about revolting my application. I mean, give me a break, I haven't run a carriage out here yet, and you're already looking at a way to pull my franchise? You can't pull something without a violation, and there are only two, there's a, the chief law enforcement officer of this town is sitting right here, right here. He's the chief law enforcement. And the second one, the chief of police is telling me, and I just spent time with him, and he's getting wore out with this, and he's saying, "Ray, you don't have to say where you're going to pick people up. You can sit at the meter and put your money in the meter, and you can sit there for four hours. I can sit right there for four hours and do it." The Pepsi-Cola truck does it, they board and unload out here, they do it. You can't say, "Well, this guy can do it, but this guy can't." You can't have it both ways, guys.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could we seek an opinion from the municipal league if we have the ability to conduct commerce within the city limits, regardless of whether it's a state highway or a city street?
Mr. Weaver, has that been addressed amongst all of the issues between the highway department and you and the municipal league, I think?
I didn't bring it.
It's my understanding we have the right to regulate commerce within the city limits, period.
Okay.
I don't know that the exact question asked just now has ever been presented to them, but yes, I think that's pretty well been covered. And I think that the consensus has been, from the highway department and from the municipal league, that we can control our city streets, and we can thereby control commerce within the city. But as far as transit upon the state highway, we can't put up a barricade at the end of the state highway and say, "Nobody comes through," whether it be a physical or whether it be a metaphorical barricade, and say that Mr. Dotson's carriages, or hitchhikers, or whoever, state can prohibit what they want on their roads. We can't, as far as what's going to transit through. But I think your question a while ago is correct, that we can, once we're regulating the commerce, we can regulate whether he stops in another area that's been designated for a separate franchise, and prevent him from taking fares from that franchise.
No. I mean, you can, you can't be like a restaurant.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, we're going to debate this issue till the cows come home. I would just assume that we get professional. No offense, but a municipal league or we go to court on this one.
I agree with Mr. DeVito.
Get ready to lose some money. That's all I can say. Get ready to lose some money.
It kind of morphed into something more than Mr. Dotson's list on loading.
Jeez.
Okay.
But my route, on the record, I am not picking up on your city streets, soliciting business on your city street. The only thing that Ozark Mountain Carriages is going to do is, with your permission, with your ordinance, with your franchise, is to drive over your streets and back, and I'll pick up wherever I want to up and down the state highway. Just for the record, I want to make sure that we're clear on that issue. I'm going to exercise my franchise till the cows come home, and it's going to be shortly.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Okay. That went well. Next is number seven, handicap parking regulations ordinance. I don't believe that's done yet, is it, Mr.?
No, it isn't.
Okay. So, motion to discuss?
Postpone.
Who to defer?
Second.
Made in second to postpone. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Number eight, petition for route to regulate on state highways in Eureka Springs. Mr. DeVito and Ms. Balance. Motion to discuss?
Motion.
Second.
Go.
I think, well, I thought this fall ago, we decided we're going to talk to the municipal league about this.
Okay.
So I just like postpone this till we hear from them.
The motion?
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Weaver?
Second.
Second. Sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any mail? Okay. Okay. All right, now, the new business. Number one on the list is Mr. Doug Milligan's vehicle damage. You were given a packet last time of a damaged interior vehicle in the parking lot down here when a barricade was blown into it by about a forty, fifty mile an hour wind.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. I tried to get better pictures off of the CD that was supplied with the packet, they're, they're not that good, and these came off a brand-new printer. You're welcome to look at them, basically it shows scratch on the taillight and a little scratch on the fender. You, I'll send them around if you want to look at them. He cannot be here, he was at work, he is still at work, he's, he wanted us to go ahead and sense this on the agenda to deal with it. Does everybody have the paperwork from last time? Okay. Well, there's a police report made on it, I believe Mr. Milligan's estimates on the insurance payment, or the insurance damages, six hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Any discussion? Mr. Panal?
Clarification on what amount is being asked for from?
Uh, from what, it says here on, excuse me, the Lewis Collision Center, it shows a figure of six hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-one cents, and that's the only figure I have, and that's from his insurance estimate.
Unfortunately, I have a three-hole punch that went through it, but it says customer pays zero, insurance pays sixty-five seventy-one, so is that, are we looking at paying as deductible or what?
That's what I'm looking at here. I'm sure the insurance company will probably ask us for reimbursement somewhere down the road if they pay off for him, they always do. So, that's where we're at.
I'm right away to the insurance company contact.
Okay, if that's the... Any further? Mr. Weaver?
Well, to remind council that this would be considered a tort action, and the city is immune under state law for tort actions unless we are insured. We are not insured in this case. Not only is that an issue, it's becoming a more prevalent issue day by day. We are involved in litigation at this time over a tort action. You may want to consider that, if you vote to pay this to Mr. Milligan, and it turns out that, that he has collected the money, you may be creating an insurance headache for him also. And we do have an insurance company that is also possibly going to be seeking reimbursement on another matter.
So, that's what it is. You have all the facts before you. There was nothing intentionally involved in it, we just happened to have some really high winds that day, barricade came loose, hit his car, and he did what he thought was proper, filed a police report on it, turned it over to us as per our city code, presented to the court, to the council. Yes, sir.
Is not his insurance company paying the-
I have no idea, I've had no communication with his insurance company, you know?
I mean, that's, from what I can see, that's what it's saying, and I guess I'm at a loss of what he's, what he's asking for us to do.
The suggestion's been-
A city tree fell over my driveway and smashed my car, and my insurance company agreed to pay for the repair, and I came and said repairs are gonna cost fifteen hundred dollars, and I want it from the city even though the insurance company's gonna pay for it. I mean, that's, that's what we have in front of us.
That is correct.
I'm just looking for clarification on what, what action that we should be-
And Mr. Weaver said we have tort immunity in the matter, there was no, but we've had tort immunity on several other issues too that the council has decided to fail, so I don't, start discriminating, being more selective, it might become an issue later. FYI, yes, Mr. Weaver?
May already be an issue. As the mayor may know, we are involved in being sued, and one of our defenses we've raised in at least two separate lawsuits is tort immunity, and we used it last year to defeat a lawsuit in which the city was a plaintiff or was a defendant.
Okay, Ms. Balance.
I have a question. Why are we not insured against little accidents like this, like, like this guy getting his car hurt and, and that little lady whose kid almost got, whose baby almost got killed by that rock that got thrown through her window accidentally by the, by the public works department? Why, why don't we have any insurance to cover this sort of stuff?
AML will only cover it for our vehicles, is my understanding.
Well, then why don't we search elsewhere and get some insurance to, to cover our posteriors for just this sort of thing?
That's something the council can debate, talk about, do whatever, and we can, we can do some checking on our end to see if that is available.
I was just wondering, why do we don't have insurance to cover stuff like this? You know, just the good, just the goodwill-
This is what I rolled into this job with, so, yeah, I got you.
Just the goodwill that would be generated to take care of things like this, what would be worth an insurance premium, I would, I would think, maybe perhaps?
That's what I was-
So, maybe we'll talk about it sometime, I'd like that, thank you.
Mr. DeVito?
Is there any motion on the table?
No, sir.
A move that we take no action at this time?
Second.
All in favor, no action?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, number two on the new business.
To discuss.
Second.
Okay, the issue is Mcune Street easement for Jim McAvoy. It's got my name on it, so I'm bringing it for y'all. So, you should have one, an ordinance, and two ordinances in front of you regarding this matter. I have a map that will show the section of land that is in question, and you may all, every one of you may have copies of this, so make sure you do it.
I don't.
Mr. Panal?
I don't wanna make this sound like, just because we have a long list of stuff, but since we discussed the ordinances tonight, can we postpone this till the next meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It, it's imperative, owing to the fact that he is presently waiting on loan approval, and this hinges on our-
Mr. McAvoy? Okay, sir, I didn't know who you were.
Oh, I was just gonna say I'm here to answer any questions.
Would you like him to address?
It's, I'm, my underwriter is from my loan-
Can I go to the microphone?
Yeah. You're okay. We're kinda playing it by ear here.
Hi.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Okay, you just have to make that work.
And I, I am grateful to everyone for allowing me to be here, thank you very much. I'm Jim McAvoy, eighteen Chestnut Street here in Eureka Springs, and this, I apologize for the rush issue on this matter, but I am being pressured by my underwriter that if I do not have easement for this small encroachment onto an unopened, not going to be open street to the best of my understanding, that I will start to be getting fined, and then they can also rerun, have to rerun my credit, which will cost me more money, and it's just, time is of the essence, and I would really appreciate your consideration on this matter. I would be happy to answer any questions, that's why I showed up today in case. It's hard to tell things from pictures, I understand, but I, I believe I supplied everybody with a survey, and then I, is there a legal, yeah, there's a legal description of the, and just for information-wise, my house was built in nineteen eleven, I just looked at the city card, or my, you know, tax card, and the wall has been there ever since the house has been there, which is a hundred years this year in two thousand and eleven. Now, it has fallen down and had to be repaired in the past before my time in Eureka Springs, but I've been here for seventeen years in Eureka Springs. Yes, sorry.
Just as a point of procedure, you're getting the cart before the horse if you continue to let the discussion go on, because at this point, this property, from my understanding, is green space, which means it's under the parks' purview. The first ordinance before you brings it out of that status and brings it to this table, the second one would transfer ownership if you so chose to do that. But to really be discussing this, if this is green space, as it appears to be and as it appears Parks looked at it, it has to come back before this table before you can do anything, because there's an ordinance on the books that transferred control of all green space to Parks.
There's-
And I, my understanding is Parks has looked at it and they're willing to say, take it back and do what you want to with it, but you gotta do that step before you can move on to discussing, do we want to give it to Mr. McAvoy, or do we want to lease it to Mr. McAvoy, or do we want to do something else with it?
Mr. DeVito?
It's my understanding that he's gone to Parks and that Parks is okay, basically sending it-
Should have a letter in there from Bruce.
Sending it to us.
So, if that's the case and council so desires, you act, then council needs to take that step of passing that first ordinance, which puts it back at this table.
Excuse me, is that-
The longer of the two.
For an easement, Tim?
It's for any kind of action.
Okay.
First, we have to get the right jurisdiction and then the action called for.
So, which of these two is it?
The longer of the two, this one.
Yeah. Here we go. Mr. DeVito?
I would move that we assign a number to this ordinance and place it on its first reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a roll call load in. All the new orders trying to put a number on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who did the second?
Who seconded that? Mr. Panal? Yeah, we're doing a voice, I mean, a roll call, I think we have to do them.
I got the right one?
Ms. Balance. To assign a number and place on its first reading? Aye. Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Panal?
Aye.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Six zero.
Six zero, okay.
Number will be two one four seven. Ordinance number two one four seven, an ordinance authorizing the city council pursuant to chapter twelve point oh two point oh one E of the municipal code of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property commonly known as parks of Mcune Street. Whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has been petitioned to vacate certain land now held as green, as a green zone by the Parks and Recreation Commission, and whereas section twelve point oh eight point oh one E of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code allows the city council to reclaim jurisdiction over the following sections of green zone to make further discussions of the petition. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that, section one, that the sections described below are hereby removed from the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Commission for further consideration by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Survey description, a part of Mcune Street abutting block one twenty-two in the Riley and Armstrong survey of the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, being more particularly described as follows. Commencing at the easternmost corner of said block one twenty-two, at the intersection of Hartman Street and Mcune Street, a found rebar pin shown on survey filed of record in survey plaque cabinet D, slide nine, thence along the north right-of-way of Mcune Street, south eighty-two degrees, forty-one feet, forty-nine inches west, forty-one point eighty feet to the point of beginning, thence leaving said right-of-way, south twenty-three degrees, twenty-two feet, zero minutes west, one point six five feet, and south, sixty-eight degrees, twenty-two feet, zero minutes west, thirty-three point thirty-seven feet to the northwesterly right-of-way thereof, thence along said right-of-way, north, thirty-nine degrees, twenty-two feet, forty-one minutes east, fourteen point eleven feet, and thence along the north right-of-way thereof, north, eighty-two degrees, forty-one feet, forty-nine minutes east, twenty-two point nine one feet to the point of beginning, containing zero point zero zero three acres or a hundred and thirty point three square feet. Bearings determined from survey filed of record in survey plaque cabinet D, slide nine, in the Carroll County Circuit Clerk's records, not all easements affecting this property may be shown except by special request. This is a property boundary description. Property owner may contact local utility authorities for the location of existing utilities or easement rights of way. Section two, that provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable, and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the ordinance. Section three, all ordinances and solutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito?
Move to approve ordinance twenty-one forty-seven on its first reading.
Any discussion, further discussion? Mr. Panal?
Just for clarification, certain property in the title was misspelled, but my biggest concern is, is there a conflict between the referenced twelve point oh two point oh one E to reclaim jurisdiction, and it says where, in the second paragraph, whereas section twelve point oh eight point oh one E allows to reclaim? Is it too different?
That's what I just looked in the code, I bought it from Ms. Balance. It should be the second number, the first one is a typo.
The title should be twelve point oh eight one oh one?
Yes, I believe that's correct. Let me make sure one more time. Twelve point eight one E.
Twelve point eight or oh eight?
Oh eight. Allows for all unopened streets to be made green space, and then E allows for the-
That's in the title.
Twelve point oh eight oh one.
Okay, Mr. DeVito?
Just, just to give council an idea, we're talking about a space that's less than half the volume, or less than half the square footage of this room.
Any further discussion? Mr. Berry?
Can you tell us, for the, for the record, kind of where, where this is located?
It's right above the Pied Piper, I'm at the very end of Amity Street. It's Chestnut, eighteen Chestnut, I'm the only house, and it's, the house kind of sits down on the brow of the hill, and that's where the encroachment is. Not, my house is not encroaching on to the city street, it's a retaining wall that's holding the street up and keeping my house from washing down the hill. So, it's just right above the Pied Piper there, up the hill from the Pied Piper.
Any further discussion? Okay, motion to second reading?
That was motion to approve first reading.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Beer and Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to spend the rules and place ordinance number twenty-one forty-seven on its second reading by title only.
All in favors? Oh, I'm sorry. You wanna do a real call one? Okay.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-one forty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the City Council pursuant to Chapter twelve point oh eight point oh one E of the Municipal Code, the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property commonly known as parts of McKeon Street.
Mr. Beer, Mr. DeVito.
I approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty-one forty-seven.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to spend the rules and read ordinance number twenty-one forty, uh, place ordinance number twenty-one forty-seven on its third reading by title only.
It's be a voice. We're gonna real call it.
Ms. Balance?